I should note that Dr. Burke can have you with us tonight. But we have a forum, all right? And we are going on to item time, which is our unfinished business, which is our school calendar. At our last meeting, we approved the final draft of our calendar, but we had a correction. So we're coming back, two minor corrections. And I need a motion to adopt the revised draft of our school district calendar 2016-2017.
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
Okay. And the two changes were communicated to the public, but one was that we needed to add on the Monday after New Year's Day, a legal holiday, and another one was a staff day in August that needs to be in the calendar, correct? Okay. So motions on the table, all in favor?
I'm sorry. I was wondering what I would say.
Okay. All right. So we have a calendar again, and it will be recommunicated to the community.
I'll send it out tomorrow.
Okay. So we have a calendar for next year, we think. We do. Okay. And that brings us to new business, and we invite Melissa Stell to talk about Tri-State World Language Report.
Yeah, just before we do that, Tri-State World Language Report needs a little bit of introduction probably for, maybe not so much for the board, but for the community. Tri-State is an organization that we belong to, about 100 districts in the tri-state area who are considered suburban and high performing. These are by definition the 100 highest performing districts in Connecticut, New Jersey, and New York, in the tri-state area anyway. And one of the main purposes of the organization is to provide what's called a critical friends' review of programs in each other's school districts. So one of the situations that we ran into in the past was that our main accrediting institution was the Middle States Association, and they would send representative members from their school districts here to evaluate us, and they would end up asking for jobs, you know? They really weren't high performing districts, and consequently, they weren't able to offer us valuable criticism or valuable suggestions. So we formed our own organization, Tri-State, and every several years, we select a program to be visited and critiqued. So this year, it was the World Languages. I want to commend Melissa for the work that went into it. It's tremendous amount of work preparing for it. And I also want to commend the members of her staff, who saw this as an exciting opportunity to look at their work. I think one of the challenges for the World Languages Program is that over the, while over the past few years, every other department's been engaged in revising their curriculum to meet the common core, and while they've been engaged in preparing students for tests that go into their evaluations, none of that was happening in the World Languages Program. There's not even a Regents exam in a World Languages Program. So it's been difficult for that department to establish new standards and measure itself. The study was very helpful for that. Am I missing anything, Tim?
Nope. Those are the big things. I just want to reiterate how much time Melissa put into this. I know she won't tell you this, but over the past two years, she came in on Saturdays, and she worked all the time, all summer, to prepare. It's a huge amount of work to do, and I know she worked really hard on behalf of the department and with them to accomplish this. So I want to thank you for all your work on doing this. And it's really meaningful work, and I think you're going to hear a summary of what happened.
Where are we at now?
So, thank you for, I have to stand because I'm a teacher. So thank you for letting me come in and share the experience with you. I want to expand a little bit on what Tri-State actually does. It is a group of critical friends that come in and focus on a particular idea that we want to work on. They look at eight indicators that they present, and they look at an essential question that we present to them, and they focus all of their ideas in looking at our evidence through that. The preparation of evidence and self-study is really the integral part of a Tri-State's visit. I took 18 months to prepare for our visit with my faculty. Part of that preparation involved us getting used to and understanding the indicators that are involved from Tri-State. But more importantly, it took us more than a couple of weeks to establish and collaborate on an essential question that was going to lead our work. I'm going to jump to the essential question, so you can take a look at it. I think it'll focus on what I'm talking about. I'll read it aloud. "To what extent does the World Language Program prepare students for global competence in the 21st century through differentiated curricular and instructional approaches, performance-based tasks and assessments, and implementation and integration of technology?" The first part of that essential question is actually our response to what is our language department doing? The ACTFOL, the American Council on Teaching a Foreign Language, recently came out with standards, finally. The New York State hasn't updated their standards since 1996, so finally, we have something to go by, and they're talking about this global competence. I'm going to talk about that a little bit later. And then the second part of our essential question are actually three serious district initiatives that we're all working on all the time. So those two ideas are focus the work of the Tri-State's team that comes in, and they go through our evidence that we prepare for them. I actually put in a little, I guess this isn't the, no, here we go. Nope, sorry, I don't know this very. I put in a little picture of what some of the evidence looked like. There's a lot of written evidence, there's a lot of digital evidence, and there's a lot of student work that the Tri-State's team comes in to look at. The other part of preparing for evidence is a self-study. And what happens is the teachers included with me, we look at everything we do with our students. What are we doing in the classroom? How are we holding them accountable? How are we assessing them? What are we expecting them to do? What is the value of their foreign language education? So it was, by the time the visit came, we knew what we had to do with all of our work, and we were really excited, and we were really welcoming of the visit. So the visit is a three-day process. Our team consisted of 18 teachers and administrators from districts from all the way out in Long Island to Connecticut to down south in New Jersey that came to visit. During their three days, they observed every single teacher teaching a class in both schools. They met with administration and teachers of both the middle school and the high school, and they also met with parents and students from both the middle school and the high school. After their visit and their three days, they, within six weeks, they gave us a report that included commendations of things that we're doing really well, and they also gave us a list of recommendations of what we can work on to improve our program. The last piece of Tri-State is, in two years, they come back to actually check on our progress and how we've worked towards their recommendations for improvement. So, some of the commendations that the team gave us. They told us our curriculum is appropriate, it's aligned to New York State standards. What we're teaching is absolutely what we should be doing. Our teachers have, considering the short amount of time that we've been working on technology, we have grown by leaps and bounds, and we're using technology to enhance student learning on a daily basis, and they were quite impressed with the progress that we made in a short period of time. We have a variety of courses for every level of student at the high school, and we also have multiple entry points, and we also have, students can take multiple languages if they choose. Our staff, my faculty, is completely dedicated to what they do. They're collegial with one another, they're always looking to support the student and to progress their learning. And the last part, not only does the district have many opportunities for professional development, but the faculty actually takes advantage of it, whether it's during the school year or over the summer. Recommendations? So they recommended that we continue to develop department-wide performance-based assessments. We have a plethora of performance-based tasks, but what they really want to see are culminating activities that are assessments, that are benchmark opportunities for students per each level. They want us to look at and to consider to ease the transition between the middle school and the high school. What we're teaching is absolutely appropriate, but what we're expecting to do with that material needs to be a little smoother between the middle school and the high school. Establish norms of target language use in daily instruction. There's different thoughts on this, and when the team came in, they noticed some inconsistencies with target language use, so we have to establish some norms. And then lastly, to establish means for a communication between all languages, between the middle school and the high school on a normal basis, based on best practices for differentiation, instructional use, and technology use. When I looked at this list of recommendations, which has, you know, has some very serious work ahead of us, I divided it into short and long-term goals. So immediate goals that we've already started working on, obviously, target language use. That's something that, I didn't walk out of the Tri-State's visit without saying this is something that we have to establish immediately. The performance assessment, I've already enrolled five teachers in a two-year professional development program that will yield two anchoring performance-based assessments for two different levels in three different languages, and we can expand on that year after year. We're going to do visits to each other's classrooms. It's funny, because it seems like such a simple concept, but it's something that we don't take time to do, is to visit each other's classrooms to search out best practices. Working with the American Council of Teaching a Foreign Languages, those are the new standards that have recently, in the last three years that have come out. College Board has also partnered with them. So we've started using the standards in the upper levels, they're starting to work their way down to the level, you know, the fourth year, the third year, the second year, but we all have to understand between seven and 12, how these standards work and how we can push them down to the students. And then lastly, this global competence piece, and what is our world, what's the World Languages role, and what does that actually mean for our students' education? Longer-term goals, which I don't have a definitive time of when I expect these to be done, but to align vertically, which means seven through 12, and horizontally, Spanish, French, and Italian, the curricular and instructional goals involving modalities, which is speaking, reading, writing, and listening, as well as the interpersonal interpretive and presentational skill sets. Those three last fancy words are actually part of the standards. So those are the ACTFOL standards that I referred to earlier. That's something that we have to work into our skill set. Developing long-term goals, I said it's going to take us two years to develop two performance assessments, so to get a perfect, a performance assessment at each level is going to take some time. Talk about how the instructional standards and expectations, so our vocabulary and our grammar, all of that is completely appropriate, but what are the skill sets that we're asking those students, seven through 12, to do, and have that common between all of our teachers? And then lastly, again, global competency, here it comes, put that into our curriculum, and what does that look like in an interdisciplinary approach and cultural immersion opportunities? Finally, I'm going to talk about global competency. So the best way to describe global competency is to borrow from the Asia Society, which is the leading organization in the push for putting global competency and the area of humanities on the map. It's actually, it's funny, because I was wondering if I should start with the slide or end with the slide. When I started the Tri-State's visit, this is my vision for what our department has to be doing in the next three, five, 10 years, and the direction that we have to be going, because I hear so much about STEAM, I hear so much about STEM, I'm feeling a little neglected, and I think that the role of our students in this interglobal world and the competition that they're going to be up against, I can't help but think that we have to do our part. So this global competency answers that question of what world language can do to support our students moving forward. The Asia Society has recognized and identified five areas of global competency. Investigate the world. Are our students curious? Do they want to know about the world around them outside of our Moncorple Pleasantville or Bedford, wherever they live? Do they recognize perspectives? Every individual person has a viewpoint. Are they appreciating that? Are they respecting that? Communicate ideas with diverse communities. So what does that mean? Someone who's of a different socioeconomic status, a different educational status, someone who perhaps speaks a different language. Can you communicate ideas and work respectively with someone like that, someone who's different than you? Taking action means you have a fantastic skill set. What are you doing with it? How are you changing the world? How are you using those skills in real life? And then the last piece, how do you take all of those disciplines that you learn about during the day and combine them into being something more useful than just, this is my English bracket, this is my social studies bracket, this is my foreign language bracket, my math bracket, and my science bracket? How do they all interact with each other? How are you making a difference? How are you communicating your ideas? So the Asia Society actually has this orb that goes, it's a circular orb that one relates to the other. This is where I see our department going in the next few years. This is how we have to start infusing into, this is what we have to start infusing into our program. It's great that they know vocabulary, it's great that they know grammar, but if they can't do this with it, we're not serving them. So this is why I was excited to do Tri-State. They didn't give us many recommendations on this, however, they gave us enough recommendations that are going to set up us nicely in order to infuse us into our curriculum. Questions?
Melissa, thank you, first of all. I know you didn't talk about one aspect of learning about global competence. You want me to tell them, or what do you want to say?
So part of the global competency, it is new, and it's funny. I went to the National Conference on Foreign Language last November in preparation for Tri-State, and actually talking about global competency, and I was so excited to go to this national conference for all world language educators in the country, and no one really knew anything about it. So it's something that's very new, and it can take on any realm that you'd like. So I'm actually working with Dwayne Smith and Jen Ladin, and we're going to go to Harvard for a program on global competency, and I've actually enrolled in another program that will yield a certificate at Teachers College that will be starting in late summer. So I'm still learning about this, I think the world is still learning about this. So it's a very new topic, and that's why it's nothing that can be done immediately. I can't say definitively will be done in a year or two with this, but we will make progress on it.
Yeah, so we were hoping to get more information from Tri-State on this, but realizing we're really at that edge of learning, and Melissa with her colleagues are going to really study this and think about how we can bring the disciplines together and make this really essential to the curriculum.
I was going to ask, what percentage of our students take a world language? Let's say the junior class, you know, because they've stuck with it for enough years. So what part of, what percentage of our population?
So I can't tell you, I could probably tell you how many students better than I can tell you the percentage. So we recently, within the last three years, we split our program offering an AP track and a non-AP track, and since we've done that, the numbers have risen.
Okay.
So in our Level Four classes, we had at least three full classes, four, five sections of juniors in regular, we've got eight sections of students in the juniors year. So let's say 20 kids per section, between 18 and 20 students per section, just as an average.
Okay.
And then do what the population is of the junior year.
Right. So you've got 160 out of, say, 220, more or less?
Our percentages are high, they're impressive.
Which, I'm surprised that it's that high, especially a junior year, and it is impressive. And those are the kids that you can get to with this global competency approach, which I think is terrific. I think that's something our district would really benefit from, you know, every year, right, we survey the kids, and they come back, and they said, "I was totally prepared in math and totally prepared in all of these things," but I don't really know really what's going on in the world outside of our mind. And so this seems to be designed for that. I'm so glad it's interdisciplinary and that you are making these trips with other administrators, because we've got to catch the other students somehow, some way, that aren't taking a world language and get them hooked in here, too.
With the Level Fours and the Level Fives, this is being done. Our students, I have to say that the top three bullets, we're doing in all of our classes, even down to seventh grade. It's the taking action, which is, it's a jump for us, and it's a jump for our students. Understanding the world through interdisciplinary, some of the upper levels are getting that. The seventh and eighth and the ninth grader struggle with that concept of putting it all together, but it is something I'm working with the other administrators to hopefully conquer over the next couple of years.
Could you explain the take action a little bit further?
So ideally, what that looks like, to best explain it to you, would be a service learning opportunity. Where kids, you know, we just had a group of kids who went with their temple and their church, didn't go around with to build houses. So here they are in an environment that's not like theirs, they're able to communicate with the people who are not of their level, that their environment that they're used to, and they're doing something to help society with their skill set. So that's the easiest example I can give to you.
I guess it'd be interesting to know whether in Europe, when they teach English and other languages, since they're so incredibly focused on it and amazing at it, if they have this concept of global competency, I wonder if almost you can learn more from the European way than from the American way, where we probably are just starting to experiment with this generally, just to, not a question for you to answer, but just an interesting thought.
It's a thought, you know, I often think about, you know, I have relatives in Europe, I've spent a lot of time in South America, and I've always, that's my one question, how did you learn English so well, you're 12 years old and you're speaking fluent like? And the need is there, the desire is there, more than so, some of our American students. And the other thing with the global competency, you know, we go to Danbury to go shopping, they go to France when they're living in Germany. So they go to England for the weekend if they're living in Italy. So their world is so connected, just like we travel to different states. So you can compare, and it is interesting, you can take some of those concepts back, but there's just a different mindset there as well.
Are there good technology tools that are making it a little bit easier to try to differentiate a little bit more? Because one of the things that was talked about in the report was differentiation and trying to do that.
Absolutely. Yes and no. So there are good tools that are finite, so they're good for a certain bit, and then students will outgrow them. So they could be used for a seventh grade level, but that same tool couldn't be used for eighth grade, because it's been expended down in the seventh grade. More and more is coming out on a daily basis, really on a daily basis. Some of them are, you know, bells and whistles, so you really have to differentiate between, is this just a bells and whistle that just presents material with lights and something fun, or is it really improving the learning? And then the ones that are good sometimes have a heavy price tag attached to them. So it's, you have to see what is the value added when you're looking at those technology pieces. Can I ask it?
Chinese, what do you have?
I didn't have to ask the question, as I've asked you in the past. First of all, this is a great presentation.
Thank you.
And it's really, really terrific. Nevertheless, no. I've always been interested in the teaching of non-romance languages in high school. I know there are budget issues in this issue and that issue, but years ago, when the board decided to teach Italian, when they both came in, I was opposed to it. I thought that we should have gone in a different direction, and I still do. But is there any push among your colleagues to deviate from what seems to be a pretty standard pattern now, teaching the romance languages at the high school?
Well, what I can say, my colleagues haven't been pushing for anything, but I had the linguistics class down at the middle school that I was teaching in sixth grade, and when I had that 18-day cycle for all of the sixth graders I invited in, every student had an Arabic experience, majority of them had a Hebrew experience, some of them had a Russian experience, some of them had a Chinese experience. So they did get some exposure to a non-romance language. We're now moving that linguistics class to the high school, and it's going to be a semester-long class. So one of my goals for that class is to bring in, on a weekly basis, and thankfully, parents in this community are extremely generous with their time and their knowledge, and they're willing to volunteer and come in and do lessons with students in these non-romance languages. So that's the best I can offer at this moment.
I understand, and I guess the excitement that was elicited when we went to the video learning and shared learning with the other schools, I think it was Chinese at the time, that has really kind of petered away now, right? There's nothing going on in any school you're aware of.
Many schools have actually let go of their Chinese program. My children are at Brewster, and Brewster's having a hard time keeping Chinese teachers. They get a different teacher each year. Sometimes the teachers have to go back in the mid-year, and then you have a section of students that has no teacher. There are, I think, maybe one or two strong programs that are all based on the teacher that they have.
To make that effective, would that require almost a regional program, really where many high schools get together to coordinate the teaching of a non-romance language?
I'm sure that would work, however, part of the issue that I even find in my upper-level classes, that kids are so pressed for time that they just can't fit it in. So ideally, yes, if you wanted to offer a Chinese class that was perhaps, you know, at seven o'clock in the morning.
Or German, or any language that's not romance.
Any language, exactly. Does a student have enough time in their day to get it done? And then the amount of time that they'd have to spend on that language to actually become proficient in it isn't available.
German used to be regularly taught in college.
I studied German in high school, yeah.
It was more commonly taught than Italian, for sure.
I want to go back to, we spent two years with the head of the World Languages Program at Yale, and there were reasons beyond the practical. This isn't just a matter of it's hard to find teachers. You know, one of the things she made very clear was if students take up Chinese, they're not going to reach the same level of achievement that they would reach in a romance language, because it's actually been statistically shown that romance languages are twice as easy to learn as non-romance languages. Chinese, Japanese, Russian would all be at Level Four.
And they take twice as long.
Germans at Level Three takes twice as long for half as much, and she said level of achievement is a huge motivating factor with students. So, you know, her recommendation was unless you're really going to give students twice as much time, or find a way to start twice as early, those are not the languages she would recommend. She recommended give students a good, successful experience in a romance language, let them achieve a high level, and if they're interested, let them pursue it in college, where finding a teacher for Chinese isn't difficult, they have whole programs.
And don't start in middle school, start in elementary school if you really want success.
Right. And you have to do it every day, not twice a week for an hour.
Well.
So as soon as we're ready to get rid of band, we can do that.
Well, there are some districts around that are successful, and they've been doing it as long as we've been doing science research, and they are the districts, if you want to go, you know, graduate and speak Chinese, and they want to know how we got our science research program so proficient. It takes, you know, dozens of years to really get it to the point where it is such a part of the fabric of an institution.
Another thing about foreign language, which is what my personal viewpoint is, is that students are going to learn the language, they'll learn the vocabulary, they'll learn how to speak, but I think it's very important that they understand these other tenants also, because if they're prepared to accept them, I think they'll be better prepared in the real world. Their English skills aren't completely honed even when they leave our high school. So if they're prepared, and we've set them up with that skill set to continue to learn, and that appreciation, I think that does them just as well as if they had an exposure to a non-romance language, or if their fluency is high. So, and our program is great, our AP scores are phenomenal, we have, when the Tri-State team came in, they were impressed with how many students we actually have in, up in the senior Level Five program, so.
How many students are working in two languages now?
I have 20 currently working, and I have 35 signed up for next year, so.
Three, including English.
Three, including English.
Three, including English.
Are there AP literature questions, too?
We don't do the AP literature classes, we only do the language and culture classes.
And the numbers for the three languages that we do offer, consistent every year?
They are consistent, so our French and Italian programs are smaller, but they are consistent year to year. Our French program's growing.
The recommendations from the, included in the report, the articulation between the middle school and the high school differentiation, use in the target language, all of these things that you outlined for us, what would be the best way for the board to get follow-up on that, say, a year from now, beginning of next school year? I don't know what the timeline is. What's the appropriate timeline, and what's the vehicle for getting back to us and saying, here's what we've done?
If you're comfortable with the presentation, I think this would be the ideal way, because we are working on those goals already, and there is already, I checked in with Bill and Tim that there's enough to report already, so within a year, I can check in with you, and then within two years, Tri-State's comes back. If you want to come to a department meeting, you can do that as well. So I think that's the vehicle we could use.
No, I think a check back next year, knowing that you're going to have a check back with Tri-State the following year, would actually be useful to you and us, right?
It would be.
Okay. And I'll just add that, you know, I'm looking at the global competence piece sort of like we did STEAM. We started approaching STEAM three years ago without knowing exactly where we were going to end up. It was an exploration. We brought good people together to start thinking about what is STEAM, and what does that mean for what we're doing in our curriculum? And we're now, three years later, at a really amazing place, another real turning point. So I'm going to take the same approach with, you know, once Dwayne, Melissa, and Jen start really focusing on this and learning, we'll get some people together, we'll start thinking about it, start nurturing it with some pilot projects, and seeing where it goes. And I know we'll do something great, and I'm not looking at this as just a secondary piece, but really K-12 again, what does global competence mean, K-12? By having them think about it at the secondary level, that'll start to give us the end goals, and we'll start to work backwards of what we have to do, starting with kindergarten, build this program.
Jen, I was thrilled when you took this position, and I remain thrilled.
Thank you.
Because I think you really bring so much to the program here, so even though you don't do what I ask, I remain thrilled in what you're doing.
Thank you.
I thought I wrote eight years, so after eight years, I can actually come to it. You've got a few more left.
Any other comments or questions?
Thank you, Melissa, thank you so much. We really appreciate it. Melissa, thank you so much, appreciate it, we really appreciate it.
Next year!
Good year!
It's a date.
Thank you.
Give you my questions now.
One slide.
Okay. That was good.
I'll teach the Yiddish.